Okay, I got something there.
Testing one, two, three.
Okay, I got you there.
Mr. McCormick, can you hear us now?
Yes, I hear you now. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Skip, can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Can you hear me, Skip?
Yes.
Okay.
We, this is Ruben Guerrero again. Yeah, we can hear you. Doug, the other engineer from CEC says he's waiting for acceptance. Okay, he's back on. Thank you.
Can you hear me, Ruben? This is Ryan. Hey, Ruben, this is Ryan. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. I can hear you clear. Loud and clear.
Testing one, two. Hello?
Can you guys hear me?
Testing one, two. Testing one, two.
Okay, we'll try this again. If you cannot hear, please send us a message through the Zoom chat function at 6:25. We're coming back from the recess. It's a discussion and possible action on replat application of David Lewis for a replat establishing Lewis subdivision two. The proposed replat will create four lots from a tract of land which is 2.693 acres and located in Lot Two, Block Five, County Block 5778 of Lewis subdivision, recorded in Volume 9714, Page 120 of the deed and plat records of the Bear County, Texas, and part of Lot Six, Arbitrary 6F, Block Five, County Block 5778, land recorded in Volume 11514, Page 1529 of the Official Public Records, of the Official Public Records of Bear County, Texas, establishing lots A, B, C, D, Block Five and County Block 5778 in the city of Castle Hills, Bear County, Texas, possible executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney. I'll take a motion or we have a discussion.
Mayor.
Mr. Rapley, I'm sorry, you're gonna give a background?
Uh, Mayor and Council, this item was presented initially to the City Council on March 10th. At that time, this item was tabled and it asked myself as City Manager to engage a third-party engineer to review the plats. At that time, it was brought back at April 1st. City Council denied based on non-complying with 40-212. On April 2nd, I provided Mr. Lewis a letter of denial. And at that point, it allowed him to correct or cure any deficiencies in the stormwater management plan. Mr. Lewis provided this plan to me and submitted it to the city on April 28th. Between April 28th and now, he has been working, his engineer has been working with our engineers to review this stormwater plan to see if it is now up to satisfaction and in compliance with our codes. I provided Mayor and Council a copy of a letter from LNB and CEC in respects to their review and they both have accepted and approved and are satisfied with the stormwater management plan at this time and feel that it's in compliance of 40-212.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley.
And we have both of our engineers from each firm on hold to speak if necessary.
Thank you so much. We haven't, I guess what takes citizens to be heard now? Uh, Mr. Booth, you were signed up? I'm, I don't have the listening, I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Baker. Thank you, Mr. Baker. Uh, Mr. Lewis, would you like to make any comments or presentation?
Uh, all I can say is that as far as I know, that all the rules, ordinances and whatever I needed to do for State and City Council, City Council Hills have all been fulfilled. I'll have any questions about the stormwater or what have you handled by my engineer and I assume that the other two engineers, CEC and LVN is here together and discuss any of that. As far as I know, I've played by all the rules and I'm just looking forward to approval.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Mayor, just to let you know, obviously, and something I didn't mention accounts, I know I mentioned correspondence that this had to be in front of the governing body within 15 days and this is why this is back in front of y'all today.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Uh, Mr. Baker?
Councilman Quentin Baker, 213 Hibiscus. We are the property that adjoins the land that they propose to replat. Um, one long border of that property is our property line, alright? Um, and we stringently oppose this replat because of the impact that it will have directly on our property. We have neighbors on the other side of the property down Hibiscus that will also be the recipient of water runoff from this development. But I'll speak for ourselves since we're directly impacted by this, by this plan. In the submission that was provided, there is no revision to the plat. It's exactly the same plat that we saw before. So, key to that is there is no mitigation whatsoever in that plan to any runoff. It's all coming out of the property. And we're the recipient of all of the water that would be coming off of the border to our property at 213 Hibiscus. Okay? Nothing has changed in that. The stormwater master plan that they have is fundamentally flawed. There's an assumption in there that is just plain wrong. And the assumption is that our property can receive that water. That our property is being used as their drainage field. That's it, plain and simple. The revision that was put in for this meeting was a plan to look at the impact 2,000 feet downstream. And if you look at Mr. Love's letter, it specifically says that there's no impact going to downstream 2,000 feet into the Almus Creek. I need you all to understand that the Almus Creek on our property is private property. It is not an easement. That's our property. So, saying it goes to the Almus Creek is saying it's drained onto our property. See? That's not a public drainage area. That is our private property. So, a huge fundamental flaw that we need you to take into account. And that's the use of our land as their drainage field. And that's absolutely unacceptable. There are a number of our city ordinances that are intended to protect the citizens and the public from runoff. So, I'm gonna give you some sites from our city ordinances that you can use in your denial of this replat. Alright? If you refer to Section 19-3, Statement of Purpose. The purpose of this chapter is to promote the public health, safety and general welfare to minimize public and private losses due to flood conditions. That's Section 19-3. Let me refer you to Section 19-33 titled Standard, excuse me, Standards plural, for subdivision proposals. Section A, all subdivision proposals, including the placement of manufactured home parks and subdivisions shall be consistent with Section 19-2 and 19-3. Well, I just read to you 19-3. So, it says subdivisions are required to provide and look after the public health, safety and welfare from flooding. That's directly applicable to what's being done here with this replat. Alright? Continuing in Section 1933 to Subpart D, all subdivision proposals, including the placement of manufactured home parks and subdivisions shall have adequate drainage provided to reduce exposure to flood hazards. The replat has no drainage provided, except of course dumping onto our land. So, the replat fails to meet 19-33 Part D. Alright? And let me refer you also to Section 40-48, Action on Preliminary Plat. First sentence reads, "The City Manager and City Engineer shall review the preliminary plat and the provisions of law and of this code applicable thereto to consider the same in relation to the master plan of the city." Well, since our last meeting, I learned that we actually have a comprehensive plan adopted in 1997. There seems to have been debate over the years about whether we have a master plan or not. In fact, we have something stronger. In 1997, it was adopted as a comprehensive plan, which makes it effective. Therefore, Section 40-48 must be met, and it has not. Okay? Alright, folks, so that, I've given you the, the sights right, right out of our section, our codes here, alright? And I told you about the impact onto our property from the stormwater runoff. I need to refer you also to the Texas Water Code. We have state law that applies here as well, specifically Section 11.086 titled Overflow Caused by Diversion of Water. Subpart A, no person may divert or impound the natural flow of surface waters in this state or permit a division or impounding by him or to continue in a manner that damages the property of another by the overflow of the water diverted or impounded. Subpart B, a person whose property is injured by an overflow of water caused by an unlawful diversion or impounding has remedies at law and inequity and may recover damages occasioned by the overflow. So, I hate to have to say this, folks, but we're protected by state law. And if this plat is granted, we have recourse under state law. And I hate for it to come to it for us to have to sue our city and the developer and the engineers. But we in fact are protected by the state law and we will retain counsel and pursue legal remedy if we have to. I urge you strongly to deny this replat. We have our own city ordinances that are grounds for the denial and we have state code that it grounds for denial. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Uh, Ms. Jana Baker. Mr. George Booth.
Mayor, Council, welcome. Jack, I'm Grant. Uh, George Booth, 124 Dogwood Lane. Um, I've spoken against this project a couple of times. I want to remind you that once upon a time that, um, he, the developer said that, um, he wouldn't, uh, he would put up a barrier around the property if y'all required him to. So, with that in mind, if you do approve this, which I hope you don't, that I wish you'd, uh, have him put up a berm around the property. But I'd like for you also to specify what type of a berm, because a berm to me isn't necessarily a berm to him. And so, I think that would create, help stop some of the runoff if you do approve this, but I sincerely hope you don't.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Yes, sir. Sure, sir. If you want to come up and state your name, please.
I'm Kevin Kniff at a little bit too tiny Hibiscus. My property touches the property that's gonna be developed and also the Baker's property. But I wanted to reiterate something, not against David Lewis, he's a wonderful neighbor, but about the future of doing stuff. If he gets this approved and then he sells the property out, then someone else has to deal with it. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to give you some history about something really quick. The main Almus is across, across the railroad track. It is, the floodplain is only 25 feet coming this way. I talked to the engineers for Southern Pacific, 25 yards, I mean, so many feet. I think it's 200 feet, 300 feet, whatever. The creek bed that is back there in the Baker's property, that water that floods that area comes from San Antonio, crosses Military Highway by the Boy Scout camp, comes down through the Boy Scout camp, comes on that side of the tracks. That is not, that's a drainage area, but it is not part of the Almus Creek. It is a separate private entity. And that goes downstream towards Antonian and the creek that is over there in Hibiscus that comes all the way from the First Baptist Church, crosses Fox Hall, comes in front of my house by 210 Hibiscus and 208 Hibiscus, goes back there and empties out into the Baker's property, which is behind other Fox Hall houses over there. The thing you gotta consider is, it's not so much against Mr. Lewis trying to develop something, but how, but it's the future. If we allow this to go forward, some other unscrupulous developer, not him, but somebody else unscrupulous might come in here, do something with, use this as a precedent, flood somebody and then you'll have all these houses flooded, all this damage done to property. And I, I believe of what Mr. Baker has said, if property gets damaged, then he has recourse. And I know I wouldn't want recourse. I know Mr. Lewis wouldn't want recourse on his property if something went wrong. Now, the property itself has two houses already. The old, original owner had a house on it. Uh, Lewis's property, he wants to combine as another house. I have no problem with two residents, maybe two nice garages and maybe two swim pools. So, I have no problem with that. The thing is that we need to consider what's gonna happen, not just one year, five or 10 or 20 years down the road. You think that the engineers know what they're doing and I know they're college educated, but have they ever walked this? Has any of you City Council, has the attorney, has the mayor, has anybody ever really walked that big area and looked at how councils are set up? I live there. I walk the area all the time. I can tell you right now, something goes wrong, you might have a real harness nest on you. And you cannot, again, growing up in a ranching family, you cannot discharge water onto private property that was to protect farmers and ranchers from erosion and crop failure and animals being hurt. So, if this water, if any developer, if this water comes onto the Baker's property and my property and other people's property and gouges out culverts and takes weak topsoil, then you've lost something. You've had a problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lewis, or Mr. Love, did you wanna respond to any of those?
Yeah, where do I start? I guess let's start with state statute. Um, I guess diversion and impoundment. I, I don't know how that's applicable at all. We're not impounding water. We're not diverting water. We're adding two houses. Two houses. And we're all here. And we're all, I understand this is an emotional issue and there's an issue here in the city with maybe smaller lots. I don't believe what we have here is a drainage issue. Um, you know, as Mr. Baker stated, he doesn't want to accept any water. Okay? Well, the city hall was built. Where does this water go? It went on somebody else's land. Eventually, it does. Say it goes through the streets, then it goes to floodplain. Unimproved land. And you have floodplain that, that were, and they get all of our water. What about those people? You have to, we have to as a society in order to develop, we increase runoff. Now, what we can't do is we can't damage property. We can't damage structures. We can't put these folks out. So, I, I would love to see, I've been doing this 20 years. Um, I would love to see anybody that says that we're gonna damage his property or, which I wasn't allowed to go. He says he's got erosion problems. I asked him. His response was, no one's coming on my property. That's why I don't think it's really a drainage issue here. Um, you know, I, the last thing in the world I would wanna do is injure or hurt someone. And you've got two engineers on here who do this on a routine basis. I, they've probably got more experience. At least one of them's been doing this longer. I've been strictly in the land development area. So, I've, you know, developed shopping centers. I've, I've been a supervisor at the city of San Antonio where my staff is responsible for review and drainage and ensuring that we don't, you know, allow anything to go through that's gonna cause a problem. I've been on San Antonio's Planning Commission. I've been Vice Chair of our TAC, which vets UDC rules, rule revisions. And I'm pretty good at drainage, but I can tell you that two houses, two houses that are exiting this property onto the Baker's track in a sheet flow regime, now that land is not perfect. It's not perfectly straight. It's got a few dips and, you know, minor dips and valleys and things like that. But when the, when the water runs off the impervious cover, it, it'll go into grass. And it'll go onto his property for two houses, 9,000 square feet. What we did in our report is we analyzed the runoff at our property line, which would be going onto the Baker track. So, in doing that, we made an assumption, 'cause it, it's, it's really hard for us to sit there and where you got five, six, seven dips in a cross-section that you're looking to see what the water surface rise is. It, we had to straight-line it. It's, it's, you know, our hydraulic software is not, it's, it's not that. I mean, we would have to, you know, literally use calculus to solve. It would be, no, we, we're talking about a minute amount of water that, that we're going through and we're doing all of this. I don't believe there's even a house anywhere near where this property line is. It all runs to the creek. So, when the Bakers built their house, where did that water go? Well, eventually, it does, it's not all in drainage easements. I promise you. It's, it's, you know, I can give you the city around us right here, city of San Antonio. Those rules are that if you have an increase in some areas of town, it's 4,300 square feet of impervious cover, you do a drainage study. They also have some areas of the city where you don't do a drainage report until you have 20,000 square feet. Now, I've gone all over the state with HEB, with Home Depot, Bank of America, um, a lot of different clients. And I've worked all over the state. And so, I, I've got to experience what a lot of different cities do, you know, like gotten to see a lot of their rules. And, and I can tell you that, that, you know, probably 60%, nah, probably 40% of the cities that I've come across, maybe, maybe 50, uh, require detention. The city of San Antonio requires stormwater detention unless you can show no adverse impact downstream. And that's the way the ordinance is written. And that's the way quite a few of the cities do that. The city of San Antonio, they like when you add impervious cover that, and you prove that there's no adverse impact, um, which again, here, I, I'll, I'll explain something that we did in this report. We tried to get a measurable difference in runoff. And so, the methods, the standard of care that we use, the means and methods from which we calculate drainage, we calculate its impacts, the, the flows, the velocities, we typically measure it in cubic feet per second. So, what, what we did in this report, instead of, and, you know, looking at the houses, looking, just, you know, going on an aerial and seeing what's built, I don't see how we could exceed 9,000, 10,000 square feet for two additional houses. Now, I know there's one house that's there. It'll be torn down and reconstructed, so we didn't really count that one. But I think what we did, I, I, don't quote me, but I think we tripled the amount of impervious cover to try to get some measurable water surface elevation rise off the south prop, or off the property line at the Baker track. So, I, you know, I, I wish you'd have been amenable to allow me to go look, which I offered to do, to go look and see, you know, what's going on down there? What's the problem? Other than, you know, I don't want this plat approved. And by the way, we don't put, there's, there's, we're, we're not coming in with a subdivision that, um, that, that requires any infrastructure. What we are doing is we're rearranging and adding the lots. And the lots in what we're adding does, it's, it's in essence, one lot depth. The city of San Antonio, uh, and, and there's a lot of cities that say on, when it comes to residential subdivisions, if you've got two lots, one draining onto another, you can't go from that second lot to the third lot. So, you have to do something at that second lot. Well, we're at the first lot, you know? What's there before is there before. It's, you know, this is a matter of, does this plat negatively impact anyone? So, I, you know, in my professional opinion, and this isn't personal for me, it, it doesn't, you know? I've got a guy sitting here threatening to sue us all. I'm good. So, I'd love to answer any questions and, and encourage you to talk to your city engineers. So, if you have any more questions, or not any more questions, but if you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Council, you wanna start with a round of questions? Mr. Gregory? Council, you want to start with a round of questions, Mr. Gregory?
I'll go to the last first. You talk about building two houses, but here we have a design that has four houses on it, not two. I'll start from the beginning. In the, I need to understand some of the language, I'm sure it's word of art. I don't understand it. On page one, under existing conditions, it says, "The proposed and ultimate conditions of the site were calculated together and will be the same as the proposed development will be the ultimate conditions of the site." I have no idea what you've said. I haven't a clue what that sentence means. The next page. "The proposed and ultimate conditions of the site were calculated together since the proposed development will be the ultimate conditions of the site." I think I know what that means, but that doesn't make sense. Down at the bottom of the page, under other type of print. "It should be noted that for both existing and proposed ultimate conditions runoff from this subdivision will exit the site in a sheet flow shallow concentrated regime." This, of course, would not be the case if detention was provided for the two new houses. Once again, you have thing here for four, not two. If the two new houses expected to be constructed. That's a whole lot of, a lot of hoping and wishing. And I'm not really sa, who is going to be responsible for this? I doubt the developer is, but the new homeowners will be, and I don't, I hope they're told beforehand how many things they're going to have to do. To go to the third page, under downstream analysis, I have no idea what the second paragraph said. I can't understand it. I, I'm not an engineer. So hopefully I'll get a further understanding. On the fourth page, from the top, this I found interesting. "Obviously, this cross section does not model actual conditions as there are several very shallow lows from the property line, which may collect small amounts of concentrated runoff. Attempting to model actual conditions is not practical due to the very shallow pit flows." I thought computers nowadays could do almost anything. And I noticed a lot of the stuff here is dedicated to 100-year storm. Although a 500-year storm is mentioned in one of these things. I don't know, but I'd like to know if it is the general accepted practice to mention 100-year storms, 10-year storms, 500-year storms. From what are we supposed, does the industry use as, what you're supposed to use to determine what's going on and what isn't going on? Now, Mr. Baker mentioned the 1997 comprehensive master plan, as it was so named. I will tell council to go to the comprehensive master plan. They divided the city into four zones. Zone one is the zone we're talking about. This is what was recommended and approved by the council in 97. You strongly recommended that replating of multi-acre lots be restricted, resulting in lot size of no less than one acre. Now, that's due to this particular zone. Mr. Brennan told me, our former city attorney years ago, that he made an odd statement, like the city, cities cannot make mistakes. Well, and the use of his example was, in Alamo Heights, the city council and the zoning commission and all everybody around allowed a home to put a swimming pool in the front lot, in the front yard. They went, built the swimming pool elegant. Then the city realized they'd made a mistake and said, no, you can't do it. They had to take out that swimming pool. What we're looking at now is a whole slew of problems with dividing it into four pieces of property. It goes against the comprehensive master plan. I can't quite understand what, in some of the, some of the language the engineer has used, is what he's trying to say. And there are a whole slew of problems that the city's going to have to address if this is passed. We're going to have to go in and rebuild the street completely because now you have a health and safety question. How do you get fire trucks, ambulances, and this and the other back in case there's a problem on one of these four houses that are being built? Did the city make a mistake when it allowed the current house, big red big house, beautiful home, to be built? Because it is, as I understand it, there's several irregularities of things that were promised to be done according to the code that haven't been done. And the house abuts itself so close to Mr. Lewis's house, I'm not so sure that's not a violation of the code in and in itself. The city may have approved that, but if we turn out that the city made a mistake, we may have to revisit those things too. I don't want to revisit things down the line with these four homes that are, or lots that are supposed to have four homes on them. I think that would be sad if we did that. Mr. Lewis has every right to develop his property because he owns a property that comes with the land. He does not have the right to ignore another thing in the comprehensive master plan that says that houses and the lot sizes should be similar to the other existing houses in the neighborhood. That's why I'm seriously wondering whether the first house that was built there was in violation of several different things, and that shouldn't have been there. But to me, also the Texas law that was cited, I think it was cited by Mr. Baker, if this was the thing. This law came into existence about six, seven years ago. Downstream problems caused, if the city approves somebody doing something, downstream problems occur. Not only is the city responsible, the people who developed the land are responsible. I think city of San Antonio is facing that with us right now, and when they approved all that building behind Walgreens. So we have to look at whether or not there is a possibility of downstream problems occurring. That's something the council has to determine itself. But as, as much as I would like to have four huge homes be built in the city and added increased tax revenue and all sorts of things, the city is going to be put in a very odd position of basically radically changing a neighborhood in order to get some money. We're going to have to put out some more money with streets. I'm not really sure that four homes on a two-acre lot, I know it doesn't conform the comprehensive master plan. And I don't think that's how we want to start chopping up the one area of the city that is a jewel of this city. These were the high in, high, high, the high value homes are with large lots. And I think once we start going down the road, as my brother did when he chopped up my property in Alamo Heights when I owned it with him, he divided an acre of land and then proceeded to plop 4,000 square foot house on his side and sold it to somebody else who put a 3,000 or 4,000 square foot on another side. And it radically and alterably changed the entire neighborhood forever. I don't know whether we're in the business of doing that. I think we ought to stick with the recommendations and the approval of the comprehensive master plan as of 1997. It has not been repealed. There's several different ordinances that have to be looked at. To me, there were a couple of others here that I had written notations on this minute. Anyway, there's another yellow piece of paper. There were several other, other citations that I found important in our existing codes. And I strongly recommend the council, even though this is a conditional approval or disapproval, I strongly recommend the council pause before they give approval to this four lot property of four large houses being built in this area. Thank you.
Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Love with respect to the difference between what it is now and what it might be once these additional houses are built, whether it's two or three or four, whatever that number is. But your report described the difference between stormwater flow as being minimal, if I recall the verbiage correctly, something like that. Mr. Baker described it as something very different than what your report described it as. So I wonder if you could just maybe talk about a little bit the difference between what it is now and what it might be. At this point, it is a floodplain down in some of that acre property. And doesn't that mean that there's already stuff coming from all over during a rainstorm, coming across their property into that floodplain? Is that not what that means? Anyway, if you don't mind, sir, I'd appreciate your answer to that question.
So we came up with a, I believe it was about 2.7 CFS increase by adding the 30,000 or 40,000 square feet of impervious cover, which two houses, um, again, on these lots, 10,000 square feet, uh, house plus driveways. But at that, the impervious cover that we figured to try to get a measurable, have something to calculate, using Manning's equation was, you know, it was, I think, 2.7 CFS. So the before and after, I guess you could kind of look, for those of you who live downstream, your house is downstream of your neighbor. You know, your house, your yard is lower than their yard. I mean, if you look at that, I, I've been in that situation, just owning a couple of different houses and I, you can't, I mean, yeah, your grass can get, it just depends on how hard it rains. If you get a, a really hard storm, you know, a 98, 2,000, your yard's going to be saturated, but it's, you know, but beyond that, or bef, you know, something less than that, a normal rain that we have, and they are getting a little bit erratic, but a house, you know, sheet flowing off, or, you know, I say it sheet flows, it doesn't sheet flow necessarily off the roof, but it'll come down gutters and downspouts. But once it hits the ground, gravity, you know, the water flattens out and it's running through grass. I, I just, I'm trying to explain it, I've, you know, the addition of a house, it, it's, it's negligible, it's, it's very hard to explain. And it's minuteness in what we do. And that's the increase that I'm talking about. And there's an exhibit, I mean, there's, we were required on the preliminary plat to show, we're showing an existing house. And, and so, and, and there's one house that's going to be torn down that's dilapidated. But there is only two new houses that are going to be constructed. The third is an existing house and it will be demolished. Maybe the fourth structure you're looking at, I believe, is an existing house altogether. It's separate outside of what we're talking about, or, or, for our scope, which is what's being added. So that kind of answered your question. It's, it's really is a hard question to answer because it's kind of one of those common sense things, it's.
Yeah, well, I don't, I don't mean to ask impossible questions, but how about the idea of the, the existing condition now with the already being a floodplain? Does that not suggest that there's already in times of big storms, water coming from other areas now into a floodplain? Or does it not suggest that?
Well, we, we looked at the floodplain, 2,000 foot downstream, as asked by the city engineer. And so we, we analyzed up to that point. And then we looked at the floodplain down to that point, as we did to the Baker's property line. You know, not, not having access to it, it, it's, you know, I'm not sure what's going on there. But as far as the floodplain goes, when it rains, I mean, water all flows downhill into, into the lows. And so the floodplains are obviously the bigger lows. And you know, when we design, anytime we, we design, say, say if we were putting a subdivision down on the Baker's property, say we were developing that with houses, we would, any infrastructure to handle all of the drainage area, because it's not just Lewis's property that's flowing on to the Bakers. It's, you know, it's, it's other property, it's whatever's uphill that flows down. So, but if we were designing, or if we were creating plans, developing a subdivision, then all of our infrastructure handling, we, we would have to handle the off-site runoff. Not only would we have to handle the onsite runoff, but we'd have to, we'd have to, we'd have to take care of it and convey it as it were ultimately developed. Okay, so say it's raw land, their water flows on to us, then any infrastructure that we design has to be as though, you know, within reason, all of the impervious cover that could be there, we, we have to design for that much water. So but the floodplain, it, it's, you know, it's just where all the water goes.
Thank you.
Sure. Mr. May?
My understanding is this is just a question, period, not opinion or argument. So I'm going to reserve my comments for the vote.
Thank you, Mr. May. Mr. Paul?
Yeah, I must admit that I was a little confused. I just got into this, sworn in Friday and looking at it, tried to look at it yesterday. Can you hear me okay? I don't like this thing. And the confusing thing to me was, you approved it, it was approved, it was disapproved, now it's approved. And I'm just curious what material was left out that we had to go back and get additional information? And why wouldn't that be upfront? That's number one. Number two, all this is about is, and again, I'm not an engineer, moving the lines around on a piece of property, no construction, no improvements, just moving the lines around, saying we're going to have three lines, four lines, instead of two lines as far as property's concerned. And so that, that, that kind of confuses me a little bit on why it wasn't more definitive and why it was going back and forth. And like Mr. Baker said, I, I also was curious why all the attention, and necessarily it needs to be. I realize the federal laws say X, Y, Z too, as far as the runoff is concerned, and the 2,000 foot. And you originally discussed most of it about the 2,000 feet, and didn't really do anything in the local area coming right off the property. So you, you can see why I'm a little confused. And I, I, I do want to say one thing, I won't put this to bed real fast because I'm, I've been hearing this so much. In June 1997, the master plan study was presented to council. That plan, city council with the caveat that the plan be reviewed in one year, allowing for any changes or additions. The motion carried unanimously. I reviewed all the minutes of the rest of 97, I reviewed the minutes of 98. There was nothing brought back. So even though they did like it, it's not official. Good guide, don't have a problem with that. Now, along with that, I, I'm not quite sure I heard what Mr. Gregory had to say, but that master plan that was presented and approved at the time said that it is recommended, not it must be, it's recommended that the lots west of West Avenue be a minimum of an acre. an acre. Now let me address that. January 2016, this council approved, a council approved a replat of property on Hibiscus. There were five lots, two of those lots, one was .8 acres, so that's below an acre, one was .9 acres, I think that's below an acre. It fit, it worked, and the master plan was not a contentious issue at the time because again, it really was not affirmed, it's more of a guide. Let's fast forward to October, and I'd hate to get into this right now, but it's been brought up twice. Let's fast forward to October 2017. Mayor Howe appointed a master plan committee to work on and try to come up with so we could have a master plan done. That went nowhere, I don't know why. Mr. Gregory was on that committee, in fact, he was the chairman, that doesn't matter. My point being is, is that we have recent relevance to what went on. So we need to get, at the moment, I think, away from relying on the wording of the master plan and try to get more on the issue of the particular property, what does it deal with, how's it handled, where does the drainage go, what is the drainage effect? And I got to tell you, I'm not an engineer, I was listening to Mr. Gregory ask the questions, and I'm sitting there thinking myself, same questions. I don't have a definitive answer, but the thing that really bothered me was that you engineers on what I read were going back and forth on, well, it's recommended, I mean, not recommended, then it came back and it's recommended after they, I want to know what material was left out that we had to go back and get an additional study, was it, there was no drainage issue there? And if there was no drainage issue there, was it because it's not a development, it's just lots? So I'm sorry, I just have a lot of questions. Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. So the, we received approval the first time around, we did not do a storm water management plan, we did, you know, really on, we didn't do any, necessarily any downstream study on the first time around. We received that as a comment, I spoke to the engineer, and...
Mr. Love, can I bother you to just explain what a storm water management plan is for council and people watching?
Well, storm water management, I mean, there's drainage study, the storm water management plan, a drainage study is when you actually, obviously, study something related to drainage. So a storm water management plan is kind of, you know, it's, you know, it's information, you know, compiled. We call a drainage study, I guess in essence, a storm water management plan. And that, and typically we'll do downstream analysis, but I did, I spoke with the city engineer and just said, hey, we've got the addition of two houses, do you feel like it's really necessary for us to go all the way 2,000 feet downstream? And apparently they agreed and approved the, or recommended approval for the plat. So I was here at the first council meeting, and there was a lot of, you know, opposition to the approval of this plat. Drainage, traffic, lot sizes, all of that came up. So as in response to the opposition, I guess, you know, the city engineer hired a third-party engineer, and anyway, both the engineers said, do the downstream study. So we did the downstream study, and here we are. So that's why there was back and forth, as I understand it. But again, back to, you know, minimums, there's cities that have, and it's pretty common to have minimums for which point you start expending energy, you know, or time and money on something, it's usually of some significance, so. Questions?
I would think that if you're going to do something like that in an area like that, it's not like doing it next door to a couple of retail stores, it is in a neighborhood, whether it be over there or someplace else in our city, it's in a neighborhood, and I would think those things would be important as far as knowing, and again, I still haven't seen anything about the, the effect right close to it, number one. Number two, I'm back to the same question, if he's not developing the property, he's just replating, remarketing the lines, then what does that have to do with needing the downstream? It seems to me like the developer who builds buildings and builds the houses had better know what they're doing with the downstream.
Well, typically for residential construction, you're not required to do any kind of downstream analysis, reason being a house, a typical house, mind you.
Well, if you did over in my neighborhood, you wouldn't need it.
Well, the, a typical house versus a, you know, retail center or something like that produces a whole lot less runoff than that, so. But yeah, typically this study would not be, I would say, required. You can ask the city engineers that.
Mr. Esbren.
That is, in fact, exactly what I'd like to do, is I find it interesting that we're having this discussion but haven't heard from our city engineers on this. So I would like to ask if they can summarize for us the process they've gone through, not once but twice now, and what changed along the way, and if they could address, or would be interested in addressing, any of the concerns that have been raised by Mr. Baker.
Mayor, Joe Arretano from L&amp;B, L&amp;B did the initial review of the plat and finalized the letter that was submitted today. He can address from the beginning to end where we're at with this. Ruben Guerrero is on the line, as well as Doug D'Nicio, I believe, they are from CEC. They both did the analysis of this replat and this storm water plan, and they could speak to it as well. So it depends who you want us to hear from. Mr. Arretano first, he's the main city engineer on the plat.
Okay, Mr. Rappley, I believe L&amp;B did the first analysis, I think we should hear from them first. I think we have Mr. Arteritano with us, let me turn the volume up. Give me one second, sir, I'm going to unmute you, and we're going to wait for one council Okay, sir, the floor is yours.
Okay. My name is Joe Arteritano, I've been involved in the review of the plat, as well as the storm water management plan. We reviewed the plat to make sure that it met all of the requirements in the code for subdivisions, and also initially had the, having discussions with the developer's engineer on what was going to be required for the...
Mr. Arteritano, we're going to have to stop you right there, the audio's looping and it's making it impossible to understand you.
Can you hear me now, is it better?
Mr. Rappley, how should we handle this? We can hear you, but the audio's looping back about five seconds delayed.
So you're getting an echo, is that what you're saying?
Okay, so we're going to try that again. If you wanted to turn the audio down on your computer, that would be great.
All right, so I've got, you muted, so hopefully there's no feedback, so. Can you hear me okay now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. We reviewed the plat and the initial drainage study, and the, and went through a number of iterations during the review of that study to make sure that the developer met all the requirements for plating within the subdivision code and the zoning. In addition, we had him do a drainage study, and that study was initially to determine what, based on the ultimate conditions, which would mean with the addition of the, with the additional lots, having those been fully developed, what would be the additional drainage As a result of the additional impervious cover, the water would runoff faster, wouldn't be absorbed, so there would be an increase of runoff at the property line. And we wanted to make sure that that, there would be no damage there. We had spoke with the developer to determine, and asked them to do a storm water management plan. We discussed it, and initially, the argument was, it's just two houses, we're talking about a minimal amount of additional runoff, and there's going to be no impact. And we were satisfied with the drainage study without doing the, studying the downstream, the 2,000-foot downstream required, as required in 40-212. What was found was that the additional runoff, based on the added impervious cover, is about 2.7 cubic feet per second. We had recommended approval, it went to council, it was denied, and so, and then we had, we had the developer do the additional study for 2,000 feet downstream. What this, what this study shows is that the additional 2,000, or 2.7 CFS for a 100-year storm. Now, the 100-year storm is how FEMA regulates their floodplanes, that is their standard for determining where, that is a storm that occurs, that has a chance of occurring 1% of the time, or once every 100 years. It doesn't occur every 100 years, it could happen more often, but it has a 1% chance of occurring as far as intensity goes. There's other benchmarks, there's a two-year storm, there's a five-year storm, there's a 10-year storm, 25-year storm, those are all benchmarks that are used in drainage design. Some of those lower benchmarks, like a five and a 10-year storm, are used to design storm source systems for street. But when it comes to floodplains, FEMA has established the 100-year storm as the standard that we go by, and that is what we use as our benchmark to determine whether or not there is going to be damage or a need for detention and mitigation. So this study found that the 100-year storm, based on the latest, the latest hydraulic data provided by NOAA, which is, which is very recent, it's Atlas 14, showed that the difference between what is out there right now and what would be out there if the, if the four lots were fully developed, would be an additional 2.7 CFS. 2,000 feet downstream on Olmos Creek, which is the receiving body of water, and is the basis for section 40-212, they determined that it would increase the water surface level of five and a half inches, which, which based on their study and the cross-sections that they provided, still remains well within the banks of Olmos Creek. So there's, it does not cause any additional flooding, it does not cause water coming out over the banks, it remains within the creek. We determined that, based on the analysis, there was no significant damage, and that's why we recommended approval.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions for Mr. Arteritano? Council, Mr. Gregory?
Castle Hills over the last 10 or 15 years has had...
I'm having trouble hearing you.
Okay, Mr. Arteritano, I'm going to mute the phone, and if you can turn your audio up so you can hear Mr. Gregory, and then we'll swap back afterwards to make it work.
Castle Hills has had several large storms in the last 10 or 15 years. I have been told they were higher than 100-year storms. What is the extent, in your experience of other cities who have 500-year storms, they've been approved for 100-year storm safety, but a 500-year storm or a 200-year storm comes through? Texas law is very specific, if we grant somebody to do something and it causes downstream destruction, the city's liable, as well as the person who got the approval. So is 100 years the correct model, or should we be using something larger? In effect, we've had storms like this, about two of them in the last 15 years.
As I said before, FEMA is the one that sets the standard for the level of storm that determines how floodplains are regulated. Every city... Every city uses a 100-year storm. The state, TechDOT, uses the 100-year storm as the standard for determining where your flood planes are located, where, and how developments are licensed within or outside of that 100-year storm. If you buy a house that's on a creek that has a 100-year flood plane at the back of it, you may or may not require flood insurance. That is the standard. And that is the standard that has been set by the city, as well as the state and the federal government. Yes, 100-year storms, 500-year storms occur. Harvey was a 1,000-year storm. Those things happen. You cannot design, and the federal government doesn't expect you to design for every possible situation. So the 100-year storm has been set as the benchmark and is a standard for the entire industry.
Thank you.
Mr. Joyce, do you have any questions for Mr. Arteritano?
I do not, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. May?
No.
Mr. Paul?
I can understand putting emphasis 2,000 feet down the road. But again, what about the local area around the subdivision in the area that the houses would be built, assuming that they would be built? That's number one. Number two, maybe I need to ask Mr. Baker this, but it's the first time I've heard that a homeowner could control the water going over his property into the creek. What is your thoughts on that?
So in the drainage report.
Hold on one second. Let me have him-
Okay.
Mr. Arteritano, you there? Did you hear the question? Okay, I'm gonna put you on speaker.
Okay. As far as controlling the water that goes over his property, the first thing we have to understand, and I'm trying to find something here real quick, is that what is, what is coming off of Mr. Lewis's property? It is not a creek. It is not a stream. It is sheet flow. That means that 2.7 additional cubic feet per second of water is flowing flat over the entire length of his property, which is towards Almost Creek, which is a total of about 450 feet in length. So you've got that additional water spread out. So we're talking about additional depth of probably a quarter of an inch, if that. It doesn't accumulate until he gets to the creek. So the additional water, as it hits the property line and goes towards Mr. Baker's property and towards the creek, the impacts over that entire length of the property line are negligible. Once it gets to the creek and 2,000 feet downstream, the water is five and a half inches higher within the banks of the creek. So that's, that's what we're looking at there. Have I answered your question?
Yes, but I was also asking the question about Mr. Baker's comment and standpoint of runoff water coming across his property into the creek by his house. How's that? I don't know how he can control that, but maybe I should be asking him in a minute.
He is protected from damage. An additional quarter inch of runoff over the length of that property line, in my opinion, would not damage his property.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Give me one second, sir. Mr. Isbrand.
I had actually asked my question already to the city engineer, but I do have a question for our city attorney.
Okay, give me one second.
That's why I'm almost hesitant to bring that up, but-
While we have Mr. Arteritano on the line, do we have any more questions for him? Okay, Mr. Arteritano, thank you so much for your help, and we might have to call you back, but we'll let you know. Thank you, sir.
Mayor? Mayor, what's up?
We need-
What was, what was the question?
Mr. Israel Garrido asked a question. I just wanted to get you queued up so that you could respond. We have to use the phone.
Cast the audio onto Ustream.
All right, so I should just turn my video on, but nothing else?
Yeah, you can listen with your computer, and then when it comes to responding, I'll just turn here. I'll put the phone up to the microphone.
Okay, all right. I'll turn the sound down now for the moment. On the phone.
So I suspect that this might not be as protracted a matter as it has become were it not for the new state law that basically says that you cannot deny something unless there are issues specifically to a violation of your city code or to the state law. So Mr. Baker had cited a couple things in our city ordinance that I'd like to hear from the city attorney on, and whether they're relevant to the discussion, which was Sections 19-3, 19-33, 19-33D, 40-48, and then additionally to the Texas Water Code 11.086. So I guess if Mr. Schnall has an opinion regarding whether these are relevant or germane to this discussion.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, let me just turn the volume down on the computer. So that it's not gonna provide feedback. Can y'all hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so thank you, Mr. Isbrand, for your question. The new statute that you referred to, or the new regime we're under because of House Bill 3167, is the controlling feature here. And under that statute, the only thing the council can do tonight is make a determination as to whether or not the new material provided by Mr. Lewis and Mr. Love meet and satisfy Section 40-212 of the City Code of Ordinances. That is because, at your meeting, I believe on April 1st, the reason for disapproval was based upon noncompliance with 40-212. The other sections that Mr. Baker cited, I believe Chapter 19, maybe about flood planes or flood control. I don't have it in front of me now. But we're restricted under the provisions of House Bill 3167, as codified in Chapter 212 of the Local Government Code, to simply looking at 20-212, 40, excuse me, 40-212, and whether or not that has been complied with now by the subsequent filings of the stormwater management plan. And the decision to get opinions from the city's outside engineers is the best way to get a level of comfort about whether there is compliance or not. You've heard from Mr. Artitano, and perhaps should also hear from the other outside engineers. As far as Water Code Section 11.086 is concerned, that's a statute that was originally enacted in 1977. It does create a private cause of action by a property owner who is damaged. But again, because that was not cited in the council's original action, and really is not part of our subdivision ordinance, it cannot really be the basis this evening for action by the governing body. The governing body, under the parameters now set by House Bill 3167, needs to confine its judgment to whether or not the statute that it cited as being out of compliance by the original filing has now been, that noncompliance has been cured by the provisions in the stormwater management plan, which was the basis for the action to disapprove.
Thank you. While we have-
While we have Mr. Schnall on the line, can we have any other questions?
Mr. Gregory?
Mr. Schnall, does that mean that through an oversight of the council or council members to bring up anything subsequent that might be significant, we cannot, under any circumstances right now, use that as a part of our consideration? We can only look at this one section to see if it has been complied with. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Thank you.
Counsel, do we have any further questions from Mr. Schnall before we get the other, okay, Mr. May?
Mr. Schnall, I'm gonna ask if this summarizes the state law that you've just referenced. Would it be fair to say that the state law presumes that a replat should be granted unless there is a violation of an identifiable city ordinance?
Yes, sir. Again, under House Bill 3167, I believe that is what the legislature has mandated. And also by setting the parameters, once the council took the action on April 1st citing that statute. And the developer has submitted something else. As Mr. Rappley alluded to at the beginning of this meeting, this meeting had to be held within 15 days, within 15 days after that submission by the developer, and the council is limited to just looking at the one statute that it identified on April 1st.
And one follow-up question, Mr. Schnall. If in fact a replat is inappropriately rejected, wouldn't the developer also have a cause of action?
Yes, sir. The developer would have a cause of action for the city did not comply with the Chapter 212 as amended by House Bill 3167.
Thank you. If there's any further questions from Mr. Schnall, we'll go ahead and get the other city engineer on the line. Mr. Guerrero with CEC. Give us one second. Mr. Schnall, thank you so much. I apologize for the technical difficulties, but we're doing whatever we can to keep this going for the purpose of getting it addressed tonight.
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me through the regular connection? This is Ruben Guerrero.
Hey, sir, this is JR Trevino with the City of Castle Hills. We're gonna patch you in so that if you could listen with your- Okay, so we had question, do we have any questions for Mr. DeCiccio with CEC?
I would just like to hear a summary from him.
Okay. Did you catch that, sir? I just said, he's the engineer with CEC. Okay, so I can just summarize the question. Councilman Isbrand asked to have a summary of the application, if you would have mind providing that. He would like to have a summary of the application and CEC's opinion. Yes, sir, I'm gonna go ahead and put you on speaker so you can provide that, and we can capture it on the record. Go ahead, sir.
So essentially, we concur with what LMB's opinion was. We reviewed the stormwater report, and we saw that there initially was a small increase from the site, which was that 2.7 CFS that was referenced. And according to the code, Section 40-212, it essentially says that if you're showing an increase, you need to do a drainage study to 2,200 feet downstream and confirm that there are no adverse impacts. And essentially with this revised submittal, they were able to prove that through, you know, the calculations they provided, and it shows that the small increase that there is, is contained within the stream banks. And so essentially, that's why we agree with LMB's opinion.
I have a question. Can you clarify what exactly constitutes adverse impact?
It would be anything from erosion problems. You know, somewhere, a property downstream, if you're increasing the flow, it could essentially end up eroding out certain areas downstream. It could end up on someone's property and pulling. But in this case, we don't have any of those situations.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, do we have any questions? Mr. DeCiccio? Mr. Gregory and Mr. DeCiccio, if you would mind listening with your computer, and then, like I said, responding on your cellphone.
In the last page of the letter, under the conclusion that we got, the last sentence in the second to the last paragraph said, "We do not expect the proposed insignificant increase in runoff which flows onto the adjacent track to exacerbate the existing erosion issues, which we were not allowed to inspect or verify the existence of." Since you were not allowed to inspect or verify the existence of, how can you come to a conclusion, except with that caveat?
Capture that, sir?
I am sorry, but I cannot hear anything from my computer.
Okay, well, let me surmise Councilman Gregory's statement that in your document, you said that you do not expect to see any adverse impact on the neighboring property that you are not able to inspect. And his question is, if you are not able to inspect it, how can you be sure that there is no potential adverse impact?
Well, without physically inspecting it, uh, what we go by is the calculations that were provided again, and that two-point-seven C F S that, uh, that was shown coming from the site. Uh, as an engineer, we understand that two-point-seven C F S is incredibly minimal in the grand scheme of things. Typically, we would expect uh, much more dramatic effects with higher flows. A two-point-seven C F S is very small. But again, that being said, the code says that, you know, typically you, you cannot cause any increases, which is why on, uh, say a larger subdivision, uh, you end up, you, you end up building a detention pond to collect all of the increases in flows from the site bef- and then you use a detention pond as a means to reduce that flow from the site. Uh, but again, in this case specifically, we looked at the two-point-seven C F- you're increasing the flows from the site, but it is very minimal. In order to satisfy the code, you need to do a study and review a point-two-thousand feet downstream. So the thing about that is that there, there is a floodplain very close to downstream from the site. Uh, and really, that point-two-thousand feet downstream is traveling in that floodplain for a majority of the way. Uh, so, they did analyze, uh, from the site and then also at that point-two-thousand feet downstream. So, we are, uh, by saying that we don't believe that there will be any adverse impact, uh, we are saying that because we under- that it's a very low amount of flow. Uh, and by, i- it's, it's not a concentrated flow either. Uh, I know that there was a question about sheet flow, uh, and shallow concentrated flow. When we review these things, you also consider the time of con- uh, the time of concentration. Uh, and in this case, it's not gonna channelize until it hits that floodplain. And at that point, the floodplain is an increase that causes it to overtop the banks. Uh, and so that, that space in between the floodplain and the property, uh, it's not channelized, it's a very low flow. So we feel confident that there won't be any adverse impact.
Counsel, do we have any further questions from Mr. Bahisha? Okay, sir, thank you so much for that. I'm gonna go ahead and hang up now. Okay, counsel, we have heard from, uh, both city engineers, city attorney. Any further discussion? Okay, with that being said, I will call for the vote. Yes, sir, absolutely. Uh, Mr. Gregory, how do you vote? Uh, you know what, I, let me take it back. Mr. McCormick texted me that he had a comment as well. Let me get him on the phone real quick. Oh, we don't, I apologize.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay.
Okay, sir, I'm gonna put you on speakerphone so you can make your comment. Okay, go ahead, Mr. McCormick.
Okay, I appreciate the opportunity to speak on this topic. Uh, as, uh, the gentleman at place two has already pointed out, here by the boat, is on a paper. It's a blundered the plat.
And you'll have another opportunity to deal with this when, when a building permit comes forward to address the drainage issues again at that time. Now, if, the way the law is set up, the approval of a plat is not discretionary. It is merely ministerial.
To say that if the applicant meets all of the requirements, then the council has no obligation to approve the plat.
Here, the council acted on this plat application on April and issued a letter of denial in which they specified a certain provision of the code as the basis for the denial. It's inappropriate for the council now to try to add other code sections or law to their denial and put additional rublogs in front of the, uh. What is appropriate is that the council takes the legitimate step of approving the plat and then address the issues for individual construction down the way when a permit comes forward. If someone, for example, decided they wanted to pave over a lot, to put concrete over it, make it all impermeable, that would make a significant difference to the approval of the, of the building permit. Which I imagine it probably wouldn't freeze it. At this point, the council has a decision to make, it's a fairly simple one. The council, at, at the last regular meeting, issued a denial letter specifying the requirements for approval. You now have two letters of approval from the city engineers studying if the application meets all the requirements. Difficult for me to see how you might now be able to deny it. However, if there are questions, I suggest that a decision might be appropriate to confer with the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. That was, uh, Mr. Isbrand correctly pointed out. We do not have a motion to serve it, so.
I'll move that we have a roll call vote, starting with place one on the question.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Gregory to call for the vote. Motion, a motion on the, so you making a motion to... But, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't we need a motion to either approve or disapprove?
Mr. Mayor. I, I would object to that procedure for an important, uh, reason. There needs to be a specific recommendation or motion on the table, seconded. And I've waited to make comment until we have that opportunity on a specific motion. So I think we need a motion, a second, and then go to discussion.
Okay, well, counsel, I'm still entertaining any motion that anybody's willing to offer.
I'm going to approve the plat as presented today.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Joyce to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. May. Question? For me?
Alright, so I'll make it short and sweet. We should make the decision tonight based on facts, science, and the law, and most importantly, on the law. And we have heard from March Knoll, we've heard from Skip. And based on my view of the law, we are exactly at, on, on point with what Skip just said. H B three-one-six-seven tells us that's where we should go. The argument that one particular landowner can sue the city, for example, is not really persuasive to me because it's non-unique. We have a developer can equally sue for an inappropriate decision. And the developer in this case actually has a good argument because he has complied with everything that's been requ- requested of him. The individual complaints by one landowner are speculative at best. There is a remedy under the law. If there is any damage, as we have already discussed, state law takes care of that. I applaud Mr. Paul for bringing back the, um, history of some of our other developments. The one-oh-one Hibiscus development, it's one block away. It did not destroy the character of that area, and I should know. I live next door to one-oh-one Hibiscus. And to the point that that standard is not gonna be met in this proposed replat is, is it's ridiculous because those particular parcels were less than an acre. And yes, would I like to have an unobstructed view of unbroken canopy where we have a lot of wildlife? I would love to have had the doctor's property not subdivided. However, guess what we got in return? Four wonderful neighbors. I've met three of the four. We have an improvement on each one of those one, slightly less than one acre lots. We have an immeasurable better base for taxes, which helps everybody. And thank you, Bakers, for designing it so that we're not destroying the ambiance. And I am confident that going forward, if there is going to be development, it's going to be done intelligently, and that's what the council is here for. To talk about the design, make changes, or suggest changes if we can. But this city needs to move forward. We cannot simply be a local government of no. No, 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 especially when the state law says we can't. So with that, that's why I'm voting that we approve this replat.
Mr. Gregory.
There was a time a few years ago that I brought a proposal to council that was rejected unanimously. Or no, it didn't get a second. But it came back to council and council's hands were tied by the law. And people who did not approve of the proposal had to vote for the proposal. Uh, I believe this is one of those times now. The law is very clear. And I think we have to adhere to the law. And down the road, we can fight the battle again on other questions that may arise. That's why I intend to approve.
Further discussion, counsel? I think we'll do a, uh, roll call vote. Mr. Gregory? Aye, Mr. Gregory? Joyce?
Aye.
Oh, Mr. Joyce is an aye. Mr. May?
Aye.
Mr. May is an aye. Mr. Paul? Paul is an aye, and Mr. Isbrand?
Aye.
Mr. Isbrand is an aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, uh, proceed to announcements by mayor and city council members welcoming our new council members that are here. Uh, start with Mr. Isbrand.
And that would be what I would wanna say. I would certainly like to welcome Mr. Joyce and Mr. Paul to council. Welcome back, Mr. Gregory, for his next term. I look forward to the collaboration and working with you all in the coming days.
Thank you, Mr. Isbrand, Mr. Paul.
No, I'm just getting my feet wet, but thank you. More to come.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. May?
I just wanted to say publicly that we are going into the budgetary summer period. Uh, I intend to show up, and I know every single one of us is gonna show up and we're going to engage each other. Uh, and I hope we can do that very constructively because we've got a lot of challenges with the city. The city is depending on us. I've had many private citizens reach out to me. They're concerned, and the best thing I can say in response is, number one, when all the statistics are laid out there, we'll see how well we did, being smart in our distancing and working from home and all those things. So those that are out there listening, if you are, uh, keep doing what you're doing, and we're gonna do our part. We're gonna show up and we're gonna work together.
Mr. May, Mr. Joyce?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, folks, it's an honor to be here. I really am very grateful for the opportunity to serve our city in this manner. And I feel very fortunate because I think I'm part of a very distinguished group and I'm very happy to be there. Thank you all for the welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce. Mr. Gregory?
I wanna welcome back Mr. Paul and welcome Mr. Joyce back on the council. I hope in the next few weeks, because I think it's gonna have to be done in the next few weeks, there're gonna be enormous problems ahead of us with regard to schools as well as the November election. We better get our act together. Uh, I don't see how the schools are gonna open. I don't know where they're gonna open. I don't know what the city can do to help the elementary school here, uh, but if we help, they're gonna need a lot of help. And I hope we put together a committee to have options on the table by July at the latest or August at the latest for how we can accommodate people to vote in November. I think that's gonna be a problem that has to be looked at early and addressed early and not scrambled on one or two days before early voting starts. Thank you.
Very great. I just wanted to point out that from what I've been told on all the conference calls, we are past the peak, but we still have the downside, and I would encourage you to continue to physically distance as possible and, uh, take every precaution that you can. One point of news is the City of San Antonio Metro Health is now offering COVID-nineteen testing to everybody. Uh, that is a little bit different in that before it was only if you were symptomatic or had been in contact. But they are trying to ramp up their testing efforts to include anybody that's willing to take the test. So if it's something that you are able and willing to do, I would encourage you to do so, and I will be posting information on that, where you can go to get that done. I know that Mr. Rapley also has some comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Gregory, I hope we get school back going for the sake of having an eight-year-old who needs to be back in school, so. Um, I, I appreciate y'all's patience and I apologize for the audio/video. Um, this seemed to be work in the last couple meetings, but it looks like we're gonna have to tweak a few things here, uh, if we're still gonna be using the Zoom moving forward, um, and/or the Ustream. But I think in talking to staff, we have an idea of what it might have impacted tonight, so just wanna let you know, we'll work on that. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley. With that being said, I entertain a motion to adjourn. First by Mr. May, a second by Mr. Joyce. All in favor? Unanimous. Have a good evening. Thank you.